Okay, there's a microphone, I hope. Video, I hope. Can anybody hear me? Okay, thank you. I decided not to fight the problem today. I just started with the headphones on and it all works fine.
Hello, Gus and Christine.
Hello there.
Hi, Nick.
Good evening.
We can hear you. Well, I don't know, was that you whining about this Board of Selectment meeting?
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Pete. Kind of sorry you don't get to debate anybody running up to the election, Pete. It's a real shame, but kind of.
Gus, you and I can have debates.
Yeah. Yes, yes, we can.
I'll see you there the Saturday before the election. I'll bring a soapbox.
That's right. I'll see if I can find a bully pulpit.
Wait a second, does this mean that Mark Sorrell now has Zoom video?
Oh, oh, really?
This was my surprise for tonight.
Whoa.
He has to come out.
Hello, everybody.
There's a button there. Oh, Murray. I like your teak. Teak collection. I like your, your teapot collection behind you.
Oh, those are Paul Teapots. As long as we're engaged in show and tell.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
Yeah. Oh, with Mike. Great. I have a new screensaver that I installed on my computer, which brings up photos that are on my computer. And Mike Sullivan appeared on my computer this past week, actually.
Appears in my dreams with alarming frequency.
So, Chris, can we start?
Please start.
Please stop and start. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 9th, 2021 Board of Selectment Meeting pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to encourage that the people, that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or review this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda. And meeting notice, all votes subject to remote participation and will be roll call votes. The meeting is being recorded and we have a new thing where we want people, if you want to comment, if you have a comment, please type your name and address in the chat box. And then I'll recognize you and you can speak. We won't bring you over for the video, but just the voice. And then it becomes part of the recorded meeting of the, of the Select Board and the people can hear your comments. So we don't have to read your comments. Basically, that's what that gets around. And we start our meetings with a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the world in defense of our country. So why don't we start with that? Thank you. I watched the movie Zero Dark Thirty this past week, and that reminded me of seeing those people in that movie in different parts of the world. Our first appointment is with Todd Trehubenko.
Nope. Nope. Melissa Kaufman first.
We're going to have Melissa first.
Oh, not on my agenda. So we're going to start with Melissa Kaufman to discuss the floor.
You haven't figured this out yet, Pete. There's a pattern here.
I need more time with my agendas, apparently. So we're starting with Melissa Kaufman from the Board of Health to discuss the Floral Heart Project, National Day of Mourning for COVID-19, and request use of town property. Hi, Melissa. Thanks for coming.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
You know, I'm afraid I'm echoing because
Yes, you are.
But I'm having some technical difficulties here.
Can I turn off your other one, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't hear you guys. That's the only problem.
Oh.
Well, why don't you try it with the echoing then?
Okay. All right. So I'll make it quick. First of all, thank you guys so much for for letting me come in to speak tonight. I appreciate all your hard work. This has been a heck of a year. I was given the opportunity to bring an initiative to Medfield. It's called the Floral Heart Project. And what it is, is a day of recognition through a simple memorial of putting out a heart garland, basically being donated to us by 1-800-FLOWERS. This initiative is nationwide. It's going to be unveiled March 1st in different cities across the country, from Illinois to Texas to here in Massachusetts, hopefully. And March 1st is supposed to be, or going to hopefully be, a new day of recognition for everything that's been sort of lost here in everyone's lives. Like, you know, people have lost things from independence to having, you know, physical and mental health issues to the ultimate loss of life. So this could be just a day for us to recognize that and just have a moment where we could collectively meet as a town. The question I have, I guess, would be, one, where, where this memorial could take place and, two, the gathering size. I guess those would be what I'm looking to your guidance for. We had suggested a couple places to Christine. One was possibly at Baxter Park, and the other location was perhaps in front of the Town Hall. And again, what this entails is basically just unveiling this flower heart, having a place where Medfield residents can come and pay homage to the year that they've had. And maybe we could leave this floral presentation up for perhaps a week.
So as someone who went to Florida years ago.
Turn my volume up.
As someone who went to Florida years ago.
Sorry, Christine, I can't hear you. So give me one second. I'm going to join again here.
Gus, did you have any questions or comments?
Sorry about that.
Looks like it's working. The only general question, a question and a comment, the general question I had in terms of the two, both locations sound potentially appropriate to me. So I was wondering whether it was more important to pick a location that would handle a larger group of people, in which case I would look at Baxter Park versus something that you want to keep up for a few days where it might get better visibility out in front of the Town Hall. So in terms of just my reaction to your question, then my second reaction when you said, well, you know, what's your feeling on the size of the group? I was sitting there in the back of my head saying, I would check with the Board of Health.
Hold on, let me ask them. I prefer to keep it as a smaller group, quite frankly, just having, so I should have mentioned that the group of kids that I've picked to help me with this are about 10 high school boys that have been in a service group together for the last 10 years. So they've been together almost since they were seven years old, and they've done a variety of outreach programs. So I thought it'd be nice to have high school students lead me in this initiative to really recognize what they've lost. So I'd like them to be there. Obviously, there's about 10 of them and maybe one of their parents, perhaps. And we'd like someone to take pictures and maybe even like have Medfield TV come by or perhaps one of the local news stations.
The gathering limit list is going to be 25.
Yeah.
So I guess.
There was exceptions made for memorials, Christine. I know that they were doing something.
Um.
Looked into that one.
Let me talk to Bridget about that, but I.
Yeah, I mean, that's totally fine with me.
My first thought personally would be that probably it sounds, that's what you have in mind, and it's going to stay up for a while. Seems like it might be, you get better visibility in front of the Town Hall for people to see it, I would think, over that time, but I'm happy the way. Very, very, very happy.
Very, very happy.
Mike, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's, I think it's great, and I think the reality is that the people who've been on the Board of Health over the past year get whatever they want, from my perspective. So, you know, we kind of owe you all such a debt of gratitude for having you get appointed to this board just before you sort of probably did more work than the Board of Health has had to do in, I don't know, maybe since 1920. I'm not sure when it was. So, so thank you for that. And I think this is fine. I think the Town Hall, and Baxter Park does have more room for circulation for people to walk through. Many more people will probably see it if they drive by the Town Hall.
That's what I was thinking. That's more visibility.
So I.
Christine, are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely. If the Board of Selectmen are fine with the Town Hall, we're fine with that.
Okay, great.
So Melissa, I think this is an excellent idea. I think that, given the size of the crowd you're having, maybe the Town Hall is the better of the two places. I was just going to mention to you my experience from going to Florida in March one year and getting, coming back and finding the weather kind of okay, warm enough. And so I put some houseplants outside and they immediately got killed by frost. So I would just share that, that your floral arrangement might not last long, but.
Yeah. It's going to be a collection of roses in the shape of a heart, I think.
Yeah, sounds like a great idea. Thank you for for bringing it forward and for doing it, organizing it.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk.
All right. Are we going to, are we going to have a vote on this?
I knew you should vote to authorize the use of the Town Hall.
Town Hall.
Yeah.
All right, everyone that we authorized the use of the Town Hall for this floral arrangement for the National Day of Mourning for COVID-19 from March 1st through March 8th, is that the period of time?
First week of March.
A week, Melissa? That would be great. Okay.
March 1st to March 8th.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes. Thank you so much, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa. Good luck with it.
See you three o'clock tomorrow.
All right, now we have Todd Trehubenko, Chair of the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee to discuss the Medfield State Hospital Request for Proposals. And it sounds like there have been some recent changes to the RFP, Todd.
Yes, so good evening and thank you for having me. I wanted to primarily provide a brief update on the current status of the work by the Development Committee on the RFP. As you know, we engaged a very experienced consultant, Bev Gallo, a Peregrine Urban Initiative, to assist us back in September. And our goal was and is to craft a commercially reasonable RFP to attract desirable redevelopment proposals consistent with the 2019 Special Town Meeting vote to rezone the property and in compliance with 30B requirements that apply to disposition of town-owned land. So since engaging our consultants as a committee, we've met six or seven times to discuss and develop the draft RFP, which culminated in an initial draft released on December 17th. That first draft was reviewed as a committee with input and comments from each of the members, I think several of whom are joining me here tonight at this meeting. We received favorable feedback and some specific comments from Town Council Mark Sorrell and Committee Council Talman Mee and Costa. And then we received many comments from the public, although we're not technically required to solicit public comment. We, as a committee, made a decision to do that and posted the draft RFP on the town's website with the requested format for comments and a comment period through January 12th. So we spent the last three weeks or so going through all of the comments made, including those that may have been made after the deadline or outside of the requested format. And it's been very valuable. A lot of very thoughtful comments and important input. Some of it factual concerning the history of the site with T-CAM, for example, and some, some bigger picture. And we now, hot off the press, I guess you could say, have a draft version two, which was circulating just a short time ago that we feel is suitable for review by the Board of Selectmen. We had hoped to get version two out sooner. We're certainly not expecting any comments or feedback on the document tonight. However, we would like to receive comments from the Selectmen as soon as possible, perhaps prior to your next meeting, which I believe is on the 23rd. As a committee, we'll be using that time to do another read-through and try to address some of the finer points, final exhibits, final fact-checkings, review of some legal language, things of that nature. And we'd also like permission to start the 14-day review clock with Mass Historic under the MOA. They have 14 days to review the draft RFP for, really for historical preservation aspects. And, you know, we can't really prejudge that, but based on contact with Mass Historical and also the Medfield Historical Society Commission, excuse me. You know, we, we believe there's a strong comfort level with the approach that we're taking in the RFP, and we think it's probably unlikely to have substantive comments from either Mass Historic or local historical representatives that have a comment period under the, the MOA. So big picture, that's where we are. And again, apologies for not getting it to you sooner for review.
Questions, Gus? Do you want to start?
I, I, because I'm on the committee, I don't have any questions. I, I was expect, I think Bev's had a lot of work to do to, especially if we're taking comments that came in after the deadline, then that's kind of trying to hit a moving target a little bit. So I know there's a lot of work that's gone into it. My, my interpretation of the Mass Historic positive, fairly limited comments is their interest is in making sure that we reach out to, you know, developers who have experience refurbishing facilities. And I think, Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the committee was actually looking forward to the possibility that the state might actually tell us about developers that we may not have thought of, that we should go take a look at, and instead it seemed more like the state said, we really like your list of developers. So in terms of the question of moving in parallel, I think Mass Historic has a very specific interest around making sure that, you know, there's developer, the right developers are invited. I don't automatically see any conflict between issues that the two of you might have about the RFP and the kinds of things that they would be looking at.
So to your point, Gus, I'm sorry, Pete, yeah, there's also the draft marketing plan, which went to the, to Mass Historic and the local historical representatives in mid-December when the first draft of the RFP was issued. And although they had 14 days and it was over the holidays, they, you know, came back pretty quickly with, you know, looks good, and they liked our list, and they said we could add more to the, you know, more to the list, but they felt it was already covered in terms of a broad representative list of developers who may be interested.
Mike, did you have questions or comments?
I, I, I mean, I just, I haven't read it yet. So, and I had submitted comments on the previous draft, so I'll, I'll reserve comments till I've, I've read it. I have no issue with it going to Mass Historic for their review. It sounds like whatever discussions we're going to have may not really affect them at all, even if there's some, some change to the RFP after our discussion of it. I mean, Todd, are there big picture questions or issues that you think you anticipate coming up as we review this, or is this just going to be a matter of going through it and what our reactions are?
I think it's more the latter. I mean, we, you know, thank you for your comments on version one. I know Pete hasn't had a chance to review version two, nor has Gus reviewed, but I think it was time, very well spent trying to assimilate all the comments that were made. You know, some of which, because I think people have certain interests around the hospital, you know, may be opposing comments. And I think, you know, we tried to give everything a fair read and tried to incorporate everything that was relevant without creating a document that a developer will just immediately put down as being too cumbersome, not clear, too difficult to respond. So at this point, I would be, you know, personally very surprised to have comments that were fundamental in nature. I think certain decisions had to be made, and maybe those can be discussed at the next meeting about how best to present this, but I think we've done a good and thorough job, and kudos to Bev for really taking the time to go through everything that was submitted and including committee comments and trying to get it all reconciled and written in one voice.
But from a scheduling standpoint, would it then still, because I think, I think the way this meeting had originally been planned is that this would be kind of the review and potentially a vote to issue it. That's obviously not going to happen tonight. So our next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd. Is it your view then we'd be taking, in your view of it, taking that vote on the 23rd to issue the RFP, and then it would go out kind of consistent with your original schedule on March 1st or, you know, the beginning of March?
Yes, I mean, that, that would be the plan if we can accommodate that, that schedule.
And Christine, how, I know it's two weeks out, but what does our agenda look like for the 23rd? Is this, are we going to be loaded up? We have kind of a light agenda tonight and then nothing next week. Obviously, next week is school vacation week, I believe, for whatever that means this year. But sometimes, you know, we have that long layoff. We have a whole list of things on there on the 23rd. I mean, the warrant will be closed at that point, presumably.
Correct. So I had actually held a placeholder to have more discussion about the state hospital that evening. And other than that, we really need to start moving on talking about the warrant articles. And the budget, a couple of small action items other than that. So we started open. March 2nd, March 2nd gets a little more crowded.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, that if this ends up being a longer discussion, that it sounds like Todd is hoping it will be at that meeting that we don't either give short shrift to this or to something else. And I do think we should try to resolve any issues we have with it that night. And so I'll do my best to review this as soon as possible and let Todd know if I have some sort of significant issue with it well in advance of the 23rd. If we have to schedule, I mean, I'm not going anywhere next week. So I mean, I, if we have to schedule a discussion session in advance of the 23rd, I would rather do that. I don't know if that would work for you, Pete and Gus, but just to, I don't want to be, I want to give it the time it needs and, but also meet an efficient schedule for getting it out.
Yep, I could meet next week if we needed to.
And we may not, we may not.
But I guess one reason I'm, so we're kind of one, one thought behind my, my earlier comment is that, you know, obviously we have requirements to meet under 30B with respect to the sort of content and approach taken by the RFP. And we have a lot of town effort over the years, you know, leading up to the rezoning and then the instruction to then issue a RFP. You know, I think the view of the committee is, you know, the RFP needs to be a good, solid document that gets put out there to the Development Committee. But then it begins, it's the beginning of a negotiation, right? The idea is to attract proposals based on, you know, fair disclosure of the opportunity. And then the conversation begins with the folks who choose to respond. So we think the draft RFP is flexible enough to accommodate, was intended to be flexible enough to accommodate a lot of different types of responses, or at least, you know, flexible to, to, to accommodate a range of responses that could then be further reviewed, negotiated, clarified, et cetera. So perhaps we've missed something that fundamentally should be in there that, you know, upfront, but we're optimistic based on the months that we spent on it, that it's, it's pretty comprehensive.
Great. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I, you're right. I haven't, I just received the revised one. I didn't, I had reviewed the first draft and, and thought that it was pretty, pretty good and comprehensive. So I'll look forward to reviewing this one and talking about it when we meet on the 23rd, or if, if somebody decides that we need to meet on the 16th, then we'll, we'll let you know and meet earlier, I guess. But we'll plan on the 23rd. And, and I'm fine with you're going ahead and putting it out to Mass Historic at this point, too.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Appreciate your work for the town, Todd.
Have a nice evening.
Good care.
Good night. So I have under our discussion calendar COVID status update and CARES funding update, operating and capital budgets, and the town meeting warrant articles.
So we, we don't have a budget update for you. Nothing has changed from last week. So if there are any questions on the budget, if you can reach out to us, we will have the police department in to discuss their budget shortly and give an update. I know you had the chief in, so we'll plan on having the, you had the fire chief in, we'll have the police chief in shortly. We are up to 47 warrant articles. So I had a conversation with Scott this afternoon. We're going to need to make a decision whether or not we think that is doable on a weekday at a five o'clock meeting outside. Scott looked up the average temperature on May 3rd, and it's usually a low of 43. So he's a little concerned about keeping people on the turf till 10 o'clock at night. So he's going to come to our next meeting and we can talk about whether or not we need to have a Sunday town meeting. I know we had a Saturday last time, and we would, said we would do a Sunday this time. But something to just start thinking about, we may need to actually change the date on that. I did get word from Representative Garlic today that they are going to vote to extend, has not been done yet, but are going to vote to extend some of the items under the town meeting that they gave us back in the spring. So we will be able to do a reduced quorum similar to what we had in the spring as well. So they're hoping to carry that through with some of the towns who are struggling having their town meetings inside.
Would that result in similar restrict, you know, the, the last time we had the reduced quorum, it was restricted to certain, you know, financial articles as opposed to broad things. Would you have a sense whether the restriction would still be the same?
No. So they actually took that restriction out at the end. That was what took so long for us to get the legislation on that. And they made it up to the town's choice whether or not to do just financial articles, and we had made the decision where we were doing it outside, that we really needed to focus on that. But no, we, we can continue with all of our articles this year. So the last time I, I did have Evelyn look it up today, the last time we had 47 articles was in 2018, and we had a two-night town meeting. So I think we need to start planning on a longer timeframe.
Is, is there a reason we couldn't? Is, is, is there a reason we couldn't do it on Monday and Tuesday?
No, it's whether or not we wanted to try and do it all at once or two nights. I'm sure there'll be an, an increase in cost in having the equipment there, but we can look, we can talk to Chris Allen and look at that.
Man, I'm just thinking, I mean, I get.
I know, the weekend's not ideal.
Just, just in terms of the the effectiveness of the legislative body. And, you know, if, let's say we have to devote seven hours to this town meeting. I don't know that, that a town meeting from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Sunday is going to be better than a town meeting, you know, from, from 5:00 to, to 9:00 on Monday and 5:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday. That, that's the concern that I would have. I mean, it's, it's a long time and you can have really hot days in May and asking people to sit there through dinner and potentially in the sun for seven hours.
No, that's true.
On a Sunday afternoon. I mean, I think that's, I, I'd be a little worried about that. And I just think it's, it's long enough to ask people to sit in the gym for four hours. I think if you had a a really sunny day or if it rain, I don't know, who knows? But I, I, I get the cost issue, but I, I would be hesitant to plan for a marathon session. You know, if we have one of those, sometimes you get a May day and it's 90 degrees, it's.
New England.
Yeah, so, or, or 30 degrees. Either one would be less than ideal for a lot of people, I would want, you know.
We, you know, we, we have about a month before we need to make that decision before the warrant goes to, to print. So just something to start thinking about, logistics need to be worked out.
Yeah.
That's all I have for an update on that.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yes, please.
Just real.
I put my hand up, I even put my hand up.
Oh, I see. I wasn't, I wasn't looking at that.
We're not used to seeing you, Mark.
All right, I just want to point out, there are remnants of the blue laws still in the books and Saturday and Sunday are not necessarily legally equivalent, so we're going to need to look at that.
Okay, good point.
I mean, I was thinking, if we did, if we did start it on Sunday, I, I would think we would, if we're allowed to, depending on the rules, still plan for it being Sunday 5 to 8, Monday 5, whatever it's going to be, as opposed to trying to get them all done in one fell swoop on a Sunday. I mean, I have no doubt that Scott McDermott can stand for that whole period of time, but I don't know about the rest of it. Yeah.
Okay, something to think about.
We'll figure that out. Action items, committee resignations, accept the resignation of Eileen Disorga from the Board of Registars. Secondly, vote to close the annual town meeting warrant on February 16th at 5:00 PM.
So Christine, having lost both our Republican and Democratic registrars over the last couple of weeks, is Jim working on successors to them or?
Jim is working on it. He thought he'd actually have them in time for the meeting this evening, but we didn't have them on Friday, so I didn't want to put them on the agenda. So they should be on the meeting for the 23rd.
Well, that, that's good.
Good.
Well, then I would move that we accept with reluctance and, but bowing to the law, the resignation of Eileen Disorga from the Board of Registars.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, hi.
Consent agenda is blank, citizen comment is blank.
We got a vote to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right by that.
I would move that we close the annual town warrant, meeting warrant on February 16th at 5:00 PM sharp.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, hi. And just in case anyone is, was wondering and holding their town meeting articles for the last minute, do all our town boards and committees and other people who are able to put them on there know to whom they need to send their articles by 5:00 PM on February 16th?
Yes, they will send them to me.
Okay. So get those articles in.
So Chris, I guess the next thing that we have anything to talk about is the town administrator update.
I don't have a take for you this evening.
Okay, all right. And then we've got next meeting dates of February 23 and March 2nd. Selectmen's report, Gus?
I don't have much to report. I, I will give, she's not here either, but I'll give a shout out to Chris Potts for her. The, the email that she's been putting out, it just so happened that I, I pulled it off of, I keep somewhere concerned. One of the, one of the Medfield sites this morning and happened to link through to the obituary for Lou Fellini at like 10 of 11. So I, I just somehow or another didn't hear about the visiting hours yesterday or the funeral today. But I did make it to the cemetery, so we've already recognized his, his passing. But I, I've got to miss him, I'm sorry, he's not going to be around.
Thanks, Gus. Mike, anything?
The only thing I would note is we anticipate scheduling an executive session at some point in the next couple of weeks, hopefully sooner rather than later, to discuss the fire contract. I think, I don't know how much we can report, Christine, but I, I'm hopeful that.
We can, that we'll have an executive session.
Yes, we reported we'll have an executive session to discuss the fire contract in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully sooner rather than later, but hopefully no later than the 23rd. And that might be another one, if we were ready to do it before the 23rd, we might want to do it before the 23rd. So other than that, I do not believe I have anything to report in the category of Selectmen reports.
Okay, thank you. I did go to the wake for Lou Fellini and a nice stocking cap he had in the photo that they chose. The Medfield Foundation met last night and is moving forward with its separating from the Foundation for Metro West and, and the Medfield Foundation will, will do its legacy fund as a, as a totally in-house effort from going forward. They reported that the actual earnings from the Angel Run this year were only a little bit behind last year. So that was excellent because that money goes for families in need in, in Medfield. And Meg Foley has agreed to be the point person for doing the volunteer awards going forward. It'll probably not happen until March of next year, but it is going to happen. So that's great news. And that's it for me. Nothing uninformational other than Mark's got a computer now, so life is good.
Freaky news.
So I think we're ready to have a motion to adjourn then.
All right, I will move that we adjourn.
Second, let the record note that this is the shortest meeting that we've had ever since, at least I bet a Selectman, so, second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes, 7:35 PM. Who would have thought it?
Good night, everybody.